Just dumb to how they can fix something. They're just amazing because they just get these rods and heat guns and it's gone.
Have you had a run on, um, trucks in parking lots that want to fix the piers?
At this time, I will call to order the city council meeting of June 2nd, 2022 at approximately 6:32. Kim, would you take roll call, please?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Acting Mayor Bischoff?
Here.
Councilmember Hatton?
Here.
Uh, would you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, the first order of business will be to adopt the agenda. I make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, secondly, uh, there's the consent agenda, which has approved the monthly claims as well as the March 3rd, 2022 city council meeting. Is there any discussion about either one of these matters? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to?
I will make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comments. Uh, I assume that does not deal with Mr. Baylen's request for a conditional use permit and a variance, so assuming, Kim, there is no public comment?
I did not receive any, no.
Okay. Uh, item number four, unfinished and new business. This is a public hearing for consideration of variances and conditional use permit, construction of a boathouse at 165 Lakeland Shores Road, Lakeland Shores, Minnesota, 55043. How would you like to proceed on this, Kim? Should we have Mr. Baylen or the developer speak first, or?
Acting Mayor and councilmembers, um, I'll briefly go through the staff report.
Okay.
Um, and then I would suggest if you want to hear from the applicant, they can speak, and then I would open the public hearing and see if there's anyone that wants to comment on this. Uh, acting mayor and councilmembers, you've received your packets last week, just a day late because the, uh, not only did the consulting planner, uh, review this and analyze it, but the, the city engineer did as well. Um, this is a very, very complex issue. Um, a very thorough review was done by the consulting planner. A public hearing was posted. All notices were sent out. She reviewed the zoning standards, and I'm certainly hoping you all read this. Um, accessory structure standards, uh, standards for a variance review. Um, and then basically, uh, uh, kind of just a staff review. Um, there were some mistakes made, I think, by all parties in, in this, i- i- as to why we are here right now. The reality is that the boathouse could have been repaired, as is, the structure remaining the same. It could have been repaired. However, a variance still would have been required. We would still be here right now with that needing a variance. Because it was, um, torn down, we now need a variance as well as a, a conditional use permit. Um, the staff review gets into the floodplain, the, again, very technical, uh, the city engineer review, which you guys got the memo. Um, the city council clearly just has a decision to make. Um, the staff report just winds up with the, that there's three options before you. Um, any conditions added to any of the options that you go with basically are based on public comment. Comments from your neighbors, concerns, conditions perhaps could be added per that. I don't think that they are lined up outside to talk about this, but per the consulting planner, you have the option of denying the proposed application for variances from the bu- bluff line setback and ordinary high-water mark setback and the request for the conditional use permit. Um, based on what you do this evening, a resolution will be brought forward on your next meeting on the consent agenda with, uh, everything that you have approved or not approved this evening. Um, there is justification to deny, uh, the variance in conditional use permit. Comments were not received back by the DNR. They were sent the plans. Um, it is clearly against the DNR's, uh, rules to rebuild the boathouse as proposed. Um, and there, there, there is absolutely potential for the DNR to come back, if you allow this, to come back to the city and the applicant. Um, they have been doing that with cities, and there could be potential litigation that could hold this project up for quite some time. Uh, the other option is that you could approve the application for the variance and the, uh, request for the, the conditional u- uh, use permit. There is practical difficulty here. A, a variance would be justified. The practical difficulty being that the building is gone. He can't rebuild, repair the building at this point because it is gone. Um, if you need information, but I don't see that, that you're going to because there is no public comment, uh, people here to comment on that, and the DNR did not send any comments back. The third option, quite honestly, if i- i- it isn't discussed, it's touched on in the staff report, is to approve the variance and s- variances, there's two of them, and CUP, with an, the conditions as, as presented, along with an added condition that the structure be rebuilt as it originally was. The proposal to rebuild this boathouse, the elevations are higher than it was previously. There, in their plans, they do show the historic elevations, the historic height. Um, that is an option for the council to add that condition, that it goes back to the, it's rebuilt with the, at the historical height that it was, which would then not be, uh, a violation of the DNR rules. Um, so the DNR couldn't get too upset about that, but there would have to be building plans resubmitted, but he could rebuild the boathouse. The last option, guys, it's confusing, convoluted, um, is to go along that same path, approve the variances, approve the CUP, don't make him go back to the historic height, but a condition that he has to demonstrate that you can't see that proposed new height from the river. It was the opinion of the city planner that that would be very difficult for the applicant to do. So with that, if you have any questions for the property owner or the applicant?
Well, I guess, you know, uh, before we get to any questions for them, uh, Mr. Baylen or, uh, and I'm sorry, I don't, you're from Divine. What is, what is?
Warren.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Warren, uh, do you have any presentation you'd like to make, or?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here and considering, uh, this application. Our, our process has been, as Kim alluded to, really convoluted. We started with a, a building permit to remodel and repair the existing structure. And once we, and that was detailed, we would do a new foundation and new wood framing and structure. So we acted on that original.
Excuse, I think we might have to have you go to the podium.
Oh, sure.
So it can be recorded, sorry.
Happy to.
Then just state your name and address. Thanks.
It's just like teaching at the university.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Rick Baylen, or Richard Baylen, if you want to be formal.
Uh, I live at 155 Lakeland Shore, so I'm an immediate neighbor of the project, and I have no objection to the project. Said that with a smile. Um, what we're asking is to have, uh, this structure permitted, which is essentially improving an existing structure that had a, uh, concrete block foundation that at high water, the blocks would collapse in, and when Ruth Yollin owned the property, my son and I were typically out there replacing concrete blocks. So we've seen high-water effects, extreme high-water effects, and that is the reason why we wanted to bring that foundation up a little higher. Uh, and the, therefore, the structure would be a little bit higher. Rather than concrete block, we want to have a poured foundation, so it'll be more resistant to high-water log and wave action that would destabilize concrete block. Uh, the existing structure had been neglected by the previous owner of the property, had, uh, wood rot in the floor as well as the roof. So repair of that would have been extremely, well, impossible because all of the wood would have to be removed, so you'd be basically rebuilding it. And if you used the old concrete block foundation, that would have been a continued hazard. So therefore, the, uh, consideration was poured foundation, same footprint, not bigger. Elevate it slightly, uh, similar to, uh, downriver, the property, two houses down, that elevated that, uh, home on the, the same location on the river. Um, and the whole idea was to make this more safe, more, uh, high-water resistant. And that's basically the beginning and the end.
So you purchased this property at 165, I take it you purchased it, or the trust did, or somebody did. Um, approximately, what, three or four years ago, or was it longer than that?
I think it was, it was probably four years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how long have you lived at 155?
Since 1989.
Okay, so you're well aware of the fact that we live on a, I don't know if I'm going to use the proper terms, but the Wild and Scenic River, or at least something that's not quite the equivalent of what it is north of Stillwater, but, uh,
Yes.
From here to Prescott, uh, from your place, from Stillwater down. Okay, so you understand that there has always been, I take it, uh, that because of its location, both 155 and 165 and the boathouse, that the, uh, problems, uh, arise due to the fact that, uh, some construction was done prior to this being designated a special, uh, place, and, um, and now we have before us a building that you've indicated is in somewhat, uh, before you took it down, somewhat, uh, weak condition.
Mm-hmm.
Would have been tough to.
Correct, yes.
Would have been tough to, um, to refurbish it or to renovate the existing structure?
Yes.
I, I would disagree with that. I mean, you could, like, repair it, something that almost doesn't exist, so. And it, it's just a different process.
Right, I understand that, but there, but, um.
If you're asking if it was habitable or not habitable, it was habitable. And you would just start the process to re- replace single boards at a time.
Where were the actual boards on it? I mean, what I've seen of it, uh, and before Tom, um, got involved with his machinery down there, um, it looked to me like the structure was mostly a block building. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, correct. The lower, the lower part.
Okay, and, and the lower part went up approximately how high?
Probably about five to six feet.
Okay, and then after that, the?
The wood, yeah, you had joists, flooring, uh, the walls and the roof.
Right, and this place, as far as you know, and you've been living there for a long time, um, was never s- a place that was used for human habitation?
No, was used to, to support activities on the beach, storeboats, kayaks. In fact, when Ruth owned it, we had our kayaks in there in the lower level.
And, um.
I know this is a pickle, gentlemen. I served on the planning commission when we had one for Lakeland Shores for most of the 90s, and, uh, we had to look at a lot of things, but never a boathouse.
Right, and I, I do want to at least, uh, miss, uh, draw some sort of, uh, it's not exactly the same thing as, uh, Scanlon's property, because that was the original property on that, that lot, and they actually didn't have a house there. Okay, so the, the people that, before Scanlon, and how, how many before, I don't know, uh, actually lived in that was basically a boathouse with a small living area above it, okay? So that, that's the, as far as I'm concerned, that's the history of that, that, uh, structure that's on Scanlon's property, which is,
Right.
I don't know, you, maybe two down from your.
Yes.
Um, so I, I just don't want us to get into this thing of, well, Scanlon did it, therefore, or you allowed Scanlon to do it, so why?
No, no.
Why are you?
We're not, not advocating that.
Okay. Um, what type of roof did it have on it?
Uh, it had a, a shake roof and.
It was pitched, uh, some?
Yeah, it had a very shallow pitch.
It was a 12'2", pretty flat roof.
Yeah.
According to the plan here.
It existed, but the new structure looks almost exactly like the old structure.
Except that it's five feet higher?
Correct.
It's 10 feet higher.
It's more than five.
Yeah, yeah.
You scale this off, you went from 15 to 25. That's not five feet.
It says five feet.
Oh, I know it. Whatever it is, it's wrong. According to this drawing, it's 10 feet higher, not five.
Well, I mean, we don't need to get argumentative, but it's, it's definitely higher, okay? So, and I don't mean to get, you know, I'm not, I'm trying to keep this civil, so, uh, I'm just curious as to what your, your thought process was. So you go to the building inspector and?
Yeah, please. So.
Just to identify.
Yeah, my name's Jeff Warren from Divine Custom Homes. So, just like any other process, I've done other projects in town. We, when Rick asked us to start on this, we called the city, asked what our steps were, and we were told to apply for a building permit. So we submitted the application, and we got a call from the building inspector, month and a half later, that said we had, the building permit was ready to go. So we obtained the permit. From, from that time, I, I don't have my sheet with me.
We had about a 90-day interval.
90-day interval. Uh, before we started anything, we began ordering materials, blah, blah, blah. Um, and it wasn't until 90 days after we started to tear the building down that did someone notify us that we needed to go through a different process. So I think part of the frustration and confusion that's been created here is some, somewhere after the building permit was granted, someone should have communicated to probably Rick or our, our company that another step needed to happen before we moved forward with, with, uh, demolition, and nobody did.
So do you know who you talked to that you got permission to do this on the river?
Uh, the building inspector, Dwayne.
Okay, but that was the building inspector, it wasn't, uh, our city administrator or anybody else like that?
I, I, we, I, the only thing the city administrator did was ask us to fill out the bu- building permit, and we did that. After that, I didn't have any communication.
I want to add that this was done in good faith with that initial building permit. There was no, um, no intent to go around any of the rules and regs. And since it had been almost 30 years since I was on the planning commission, I wasn't aware, and I've never done a project like this. I remodeled our house that we bought in 89, built an outbuilding, done all the permitting process for that. But this is something completely new to me. So, again, we acted in good faith. We weren't trying to get a runaround.
Was there power to the building?
There was power to the building and water to the building. No septic, no waste.
And your intention is, uh, if, if you're allowed to, to do this, uh, is to, uh, continue with the electrical, but not, not the water?
Well, we'll have a water supply there if permitted. Uh, the original one did, came out of the house. Otherwise, we can have bottled water down there.
The, the sa- the, the existing water line, the pipes are still there. I mean, they would be used for the new, new, new structure.
What happens to the water after, uh, when you run the sink, or whatever it is that you're running the water for?
That would be, that would be collected, collected in a, a rain barrel, and, and that would be used to water vegetation.
When was the wild, what is, what words am I looking for here? The Wild and Scenic River, what, what do you call that? Uh, when was that?
Scenic St. Crewe Riverway.
When was that done?
Uh, acting mayor and councilmembers, many, many years ago.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that was something Walter Mondale did way back when, right?
I believe so, and the group used to meet all the time. Um, I believe the, the shoreland ordinance, per this application, that, that this, uh, Lakeland Shores House has been in place for quite some time.
Yeah.
Would you say 30 years?
I was going to say 1980.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I guess, uh, anybody else got some questions while I think of something else here?
Well, I guess, being in the trades myself and going through the permit process, and I believe you guys, uh, your company had done some work on a project on the river a few years ago.
Yeah, Mike Finnegan's, please.
And so I guess I just, you know, when I saw this come across my, you know, in an email and this process, I thought, okay, you know, it would have drawn a red flag up to me that, you know, the DNR is not involved, the, and that we don't have to go through some restrictions because it's in the floodplain. And if we tear down a building that is not deemed non-reparable, I think by over 50%, we can't replace it. And so.
Can I tell you on the flip side, all that information was communicated to us when we got the permit the first time.
Okay.
So I, in almost every municipality that we worked, when we start the process, plans are marked, we're rewritten of any other things that we need to do, and none of that was on, so.
Yeah.
Mayor and councilmembers, again, I think that, uh, mistakes have been made. There's plenty of blind to go around. Um, uh, and again, a mistake was made. That, that's neither here nor there. We're sitting here now with, with an application before you. And, uh, we need to have a public hearing, and, and, and I firmly believe, Mr. Baylen, that this, that, it, it wasn't applied for with bad intent. It was not meant to get around the system, but, you know, that's been several years ago now, so you should probably move on.
And here we are, we got it figured out.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm looking at these plans and the upper part of the structure, if, if, if they, you're calling it a pool house, is that what you're calling it?
Pardon me?
Is this part, is this the, is this what the plan of the building looks like right there? Or is that from some other thing?
I think that's the.
Yeah, just mislabeled.
Yeah, it's not a pool house.
Well, no.
Yeah, that's not a pool.
No, I, I, I know. I, I'm just curious about the upper part, though, because it, it's got windows in it and, you know, that type of thing, and I was just curious.
Biggest building had windows in it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's almost, it's almost, uh, replica of what was there.
Okay, does anybody have any pictures of the old?
That's what I was going to ask, if they had any.
Well, we take pictures beforehand?
I wouldn't, I'd have to find out from him, yeah.
I think he took some pictures beforehand.
The, the one thing, there was notes, so when we did receive this, there was notes that, uh, our permitted plan that said we couldn't have this deck to the front.
Yeah, on the riverside.
On the riverside, so, you know, partly that's why I, I, I would have taken that this was reviewed. That was the only comment made.
Yeah.
To adhere to the, I think it even says to adhere to the Riverway District or whatever. The deck can't be, isn't allowed on the front.
Well, you know, I hate to be the bad guy in this situation, but, you know, my initial, reaction to this is that, you know, if anybody screwed up, it was the building inspector. And not that I don't think there could have been some common sense used considering the location of this particular building, and I'm not sure it was, but I really have a hard time approving any plans if I don't have any clue as to what the building looked like to start with. I mean, I know what's left there now, that, you got a couple of corners, you know, that are, with block that's maybe a foot and a half high that are, uh, white. Um, and I remember coming across it when I was either, I guess I was walking as compared to, uh, skiing on the river, but, um, I, uh, noticed it, uh, good to go, no, it's not good to go, with, uh, Tom's, uh, big back hole was in there.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure anything can be worked out, other than a, a straight denial, if that's what you want from us tonight, which it isn't, I understand that. But it sure would make one of the other possibilities maybe a little bit more realistic if I had some idea of what this building looked like.
Okay.
And I just can't remember it, okay? You know, um, it was, it was indistinguishable enough so that it shouldn't attract.
It was hidden by foliage, too, so unless you were really close.
And of course, there isn't any foliage there now, okay, because Tom's back, back hole was in there. So I'm not saying that that would sway me one way or the other, but it sure would help me to understand exactly, you know, what we're looking at when I look at the plans here, okay? And this is just not me, I'm the one that's doing all the talking, okay?
I understand.
But, um, you know, and I live on the river, you know, just south of you.
Yeah.
So I understand the problems, okay? But, you know, there's a process, somehow the process got skewed, and if I could make it right, the only way I can see myself making it right is if I could see what this building looks like. Okay, otherwise, we're just, I, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm speaking to the other three, probably just going to follow the rules, okay? Which would, in my, as far as I'm concerned, would probably deny you the variance, okay? So, um, I'm pretty sure, despite it probably being right around July 4th, you know, the next meeting, but when I talked to our engineer, Mr. Perotti, about some road stuff, he was hopeful that we would have a meeting in July, even if it was a short one.
We're going to talk about that later.
Okay.
We're not going to have it the week of the 4th.
Okay. You.
Acting mayor and councilmembers, I just did want to note, um, not having the exact, what the old structure looked like, or we can't remember, and there may or may not be pictures, I, I, I don't know.
Right.
Um, we do have the existing building dimensions. These are, those are on the plans.
Right, approximately 10 by 20.
And then we also have, uh, very specific conditions of what the end result building would look like. That it has to go through the process with the colors, it has to be, uh, it has to be screened, it has to be, just like the old one was. And it has to be several other items that, uh, uh, would have to be approved by staff. Um, and again, that, they have to demonstrate that the, the height is not visible, but there's a lot of aesthetics in here and the conditions of approval that would give you an idea of what the new building would look like.
And the intent, the old building was white, Cape Cod white, and the intent is to have it all earthbound. So if you look at the house I live in, 155, that's all shades of green and.
and shake roof, and it totally blends in. I remember meeting Molly Como Shodine at the DNR when we were going through the process. And I told Molly we're gonna take off the deck that the previous owners had that was encroaching far, actually it was a whole porch encroaching more on the bluff line. And showed her the color scheme. First of all, she said, "Thanks a lot for coming to the office," when we discussed that. And, you know, the colors were a total win because everything blends in. So it was the same intent and condition. And when we redo the house above, the actual home structure, same thing is gonna be done.
Are you contemplating, I'm just curious, are you contemplating that being a tear down?
Yeah, it is, there's mold and water damage, flat membrane. We knew that when we bought it.
May I suggest that we open the public hearing? We need to get that on the record.
Well, is there any other questions for these two gentlemen? At this time, we would open the public hearing at 7:02.
Wanna hear from one of the neighbors?
You can now close the public hearing if there's no one.
There's nobody here.
The applicants don't count, just for public hearing.
Have you had any conversations with Jerry concerning this?
Yeah, he's fine with it.
So we close the public hearing?
Thank you.
At 7:03. And...
It made it.
What's next, Kim?
Acting Mayor and Council Members, do any of you have any discussion? Give some opinions, what are your thoughts? Any more questions for the applicant property owner?
I just have a quick comment, and I guess the thing is, is that, as Kim has alluded to, there's been some mistakes made in this. And I think it's very important we don't compound them by acting. I think your suggestion is good, if we can see what we got. But, you know, as Tim said, the building's ten feet higher. That's a big deal, I mean, from the river, that's a big deal.
As far as I can see, there's only sand and water between, you know, the front of the building and the...
And Acting Mayor and Council Members, my question then would be, even if you saw the old building, what are your thoughts about ten feet higher?
I don't think it would pass the not noticeable from the river.
Right, and not only that, I honestly think that if the building had been left, it would have been repaired in exactly the same, as exactly the same structure it was there. In other words, it would not have been any higher, it would have been just repaired, okay? And, I mean, I get the impression from these drawings that you could probably have a small party on the second level. But, you know, I know Mr. Baylen's got any number of places he can play his musical instruments. But, so, I mean, I think, my impression is that if I could see what the old building looked like and we could duplicate that in some way, not ten feet higher, not two feet higher, but just duplicate it, that, and I guess at that point it would be a boathouse, okay? That I'd give this, you know, the variance in the CUP a strong consideration, okay?
I'll just note on that, you have that option tonight. And that was pointed out, is one of the options is to approve the variance in the CUP based on the historic elevation, meaning it would be the same height. It wouldn't be the increased ten feet.
So, I'm not just gonna interrupt you real quick.
Sure.
We were told, and I think it might have been, it might have been by Duane, I can't remember, or Matt or somebody, the reason the foundation is taller is because there was a, that might be the, an elevation required by the Riverway.
Yeah, a flip lane, high water mark.
High water mark. So that was, that was the reason for the elevation difference of the foundation. The height of the roof was just drawn that way.
So, the previous, the previous structure, in ninety-three, when we remodeled 155, we had really remarkable high water. And it was right at the top run of the block. So, all of the wood, the joists, all of that, got wet. So the idea is bring that foundation up, even if it's just another foot or two. And I can compromise on the wood structure that sits on top of it. I don't have any issues with that.
And, you know, if I could get just a, you know, and that's why I would, I know I should have stopped in at your house as I drove by, but I didn't, you know, to see if you had any pictures. But, you know, I just feel like if I could have a better idea as to what this prior structure was, I understand, you know, I mean, this same thing Scanlon did, although it's not the same situation, even close. Scanlon did raise his, I believe, two block levels, okay? And then, you know, redid the structure that was on top of it. But we didn't allow him to put like a deck on the front of it, you know, the walkway coming up had to be, you know... So I, this is totally comparing apples and oranges. But just to give you a little background, that's why we did what we did with him and because it had been a living quarters for the original family that owned the lot prior to Native Americans, I suppose. So, if we could somehow, I can't believe there aren't any pictures, but, I mean, if we could somehow get, are you suggesting, Kim, that we go ahead with this in some way, you know, conditioned on?
I thought it was the denial to get more information.
Well, we can't deny, for more information. You could table, and I'm not quite sure that, quite honestly, the pictures of the old structure are justifiable to table. I will note, based on your comments, you all have the recommendation from the WMO. I'm not sure if they say in there that you needed to raise that up or not. But you all have those comments. My thought process is, will that make a difference in terms of seeing the old structure? Are you still gonna be comfortable with the plans as submitted to be ten feet higher?
No.
So, therefore, one of your options was to go ahead and approve this based on the historic height of the building, what it was. And the building itself, he, the applicant, property owner, said it was a white structure. There's conditions of approval in here that's going to make that structure look even better and much less visible from the Riverway, which is the whole intent of the, you know, river, riverside restrictions. So I guess that's what I'm getting at, is seeing the old structure, which is white, old, needed repair, how is that going to get you to a place where you perhaps could approve the variances and CUP for the plans that are presented?
Well, you know, I, you know, I personally, unless we're gonna table this, which I'm not sure we can, you know, I would deny it because of the plans as they're presented, okay? I mean, that's my personal opinion, okay? I mean, ten feet higher is significant, okay? And it leads to all sorts of things that are probably easier to do in that space than would have been with the historic height, okay?
Okay, and so then let me ask you, if seeing, even seeing the old structure, you would still deny, I think that's just delaying the applicant, I don't see the...
And I, and I, the interesting part is, again, why do we get a food plan marked up saying that you could build this?
I don't know, you have to ask Dewey, he's got insurance.
And I will also again note, it's against the DNR's rules. The DNR absolutely could come back to the city and the applicant.
I mean, I think we're capable, you know, I think what I hear you saying and what I kind of agree with if you, this is what you're saying, but even if it's not, you know, if there was a mistake made in the initial stages of this with the granting of a building permit, or, you know, to me, you'd have to get a demolition permit first, which I'm not sure was gotten, but then what I don't wanna do is to compound the errors, okay? If an error was made in the beginning, you know, I feel badly about that, okay? But, you know, it's one of those errors that probably shouldn't have been made on any number of people's perspective. But I, if we're, if what you're saying is we're stuck with the plans that have been submitted here, if we were to vote at this particular time, I would deny it, okay?
Acting Mayor and Council Members, that's, you are voting on a plan, the plans are submitted. However, you can condition that approval on added conditions, meaning the plans have to be revised to be at the same height as the old building.
And my concern is how do we determine what that height is, okay?
It's listed right here.
They have it listed.
Yeah, it's on the plans, and that was confirmed by the consulting planner. We do know what the old building's height was.
So do we know when was the building demolished? Or there was never demolition permit?
There was, the permit that was issued detailed what we're going to do. They were going to put a new foundation and rebuild the structure. So there's a fiduciary responsibility on the part of the city that granted that initial permit that allowed...
Probably gonna have to go to the mic, do we have to open this?
There's a copy of the building permit included in your packets.
Yep.
It says tear down, alright. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so...
Size will remain.
There is a fiduciary responsibility on the part of Lakeland Shores issuing a permit that we acted on in good faith, that detailed all of the work that was gonna be done. I know, Tim, you're uncomfortable with this, but that's the reality. So, you know, it's fine to say there was a mistake made, but then as a result of that, I've been bearing all the costs of additional engineering reports, hydrology reports, all these other things, and I'm fine to do that. But to come here after we've met all of those requests and agreements feels very difficult.
Yep, and I can understand that, Mr. Baylen. But I think, I kind of already said it, I tried to say it nicely or gently. You know, for someone that's lived on the river for thirty-three years, we know that it comes with various complexities.
It does.
And a lot of them, we don't particularly like because we're being told what to do with our property.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I can understand your frustration, but I also am not prepared at this time anyhow to, this is my personal feeling, to let you off the hook for having gotten a building permit. You know, because I just, I honestly think that, you know, whether it was an end around or not, I just think that most of us that live on the river recognize that there's some unique problems when we wanna do something on the river. So, I mean, that's all I'm saying. I'm reluctant to approve the plans based on how it is that we're going to prove, I guess we've got it in the drawings, you know, what the original was.
I mean, it's within the report, there's a draft, draft conditions section on page eight, bottom of page eight. It talks about the colors. It talks about area disturbance and landscape plan and minimization of vegetation cutting, blah, okay, fine, wonderful things. The third item is replacement structure may not be expanded from the historic boathouse footprint. The application must demonstrate that the increase in height is not visible from the river. Those are one of the conditions that we can put on this approval. If I'm reading that correctly, right, Kim?
Absolutely, and that's based on the plans submitted. That's based on the increased height of the proposed structure.
What I don't wanna do is have to litigate this further along in the process, okay? When we get into a spitting contest, for lack of a better word, in whether or not, you know, the building is exactly what the old one was. I mean, there's obviously a lot of improvements to it. You know, it's gonna be beautiful instead of an eyesore, probably, okay? Being white, you know, if you're in the wintertime skiing on it, you probably don't notice it, you know? Whereas in the, you know, summertime, you would notice it a lot more. If it's brown, it's gonna be just the opposite. So, you know, just somebody else jump in here, because I'm digging myself a hole. And I wanna be receptive to things, but I also recognize that we have an obligation to do what we can to preserve the river in a certain state.
Acting Mayor and Council Members, I will note, if the council were to approve this, there's not gonna be what you just described. There is a footprint there, it's one of the conditions of approval, that it stays the same footprint, that it has to be, no site work can be done until the city engineer and the building official are out there. Revised plans have to be sent to the consulting planner for review. There's a very well-laid out process to make sure all these conditions are followed. I don't think that's gonna be a concern, honestly and truly.
Yeah, I would like to see the updated plans, because if we went off of some verbal stuff that you guys talked about and now we're in this situation, I mean, it's the permits for a repair. I mean, you've been doing construction for twenty years. You've had to apply for permits time to time again.
Hundreds.
It just doesn't seem like it's a repair.
It won't, we didn't ask for that, we asked to rebuild it. That's why we got a permit.
I know, it says class of work, repair. Brief description, it says, "Tear down existing boathouses and replace with new. Foundation size will remain."
Somebody jump in here and make a decision so we can vote on it.
There is a drawing of the old boathouse on the plan.
Yep.
I think Acting Mayor and Council Members, I'll jump in here. Is it, this is not a negotiation, but I do want your opinion as the property owner. These are your plans. Would lowering that height be a hardship for you?
No.
You would be...
I'm totally open to that.
You would be open to, of course, the plans would have to be revised, but lowering that to what the height, the historic height was, and rebuilding this boathouse, poolhouse, you would be open to that?
Open to that, absolutely.
Then I think that's an absolute consideration for the city council.
Good job, Kim.
It would be, if the council so chooses, approval based on all the conditions in the staff report with the added condition of the plans for the building plans have to indicate the historic height of the building. And all the other conditions would apply in terms of the footprint, the color, all of that. And that would allow them to rebuild. And that would not go against the DNR rules.
And as one of those conditions, that this is not a living space, a guest house, you know, somebody's, you know, hideaway for whatever.
My granddaughters may go in there.
Yeah, right, yeah, I can imagine.
Those are conditions you can't control, I know well.
So, they would mimic the 212 pitch, would that be required? So the height, the ridge height, that can't exceed the old ridge height?
Right.
So basically, you would have...
Ridge pole could be no higher.
Yeah.
So with these, I'm gonna ask Kim this, and if I made a motion to approve this, what are you doing, a variance or a CUP here?
It's both.
Okay.
The conditions there to approve the requested variances and CUP.
With the six conditions, with the application and the six conditions with it?
With all conditions as presented. And then the additional, that, I'm gonna get that verbiage from you.
The additional?
The condition that it's built to the historic height.
Oh, yeah, and that's one of them, well, that, not exactly. This is, this one says that it's...
I think it's fine if you wanna go higher a little bit and pass the doesn't look like it from the river view thing. I think that's appropriate.
Right, that's what it says in here.
If you could put a number on that, though, to...
Number three?
Well...
That's the footprint.
The height, we can't see...
Yeah, but later on, it said visible from the river.
With the DNR.
That was if it was approved as presented. That 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 was if it was approved as presented with this additional ten feet.
Okay, so what you're saying is we have to.
Let's add one condition to make it real clear about the height.
Okay. That it should be the historic height?
Historic height.
Fine. Okay, well, then I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the variances in the CUP. Based on the existing conditions listed in the draft and adding one more for the historic height requirement. Did I do it right, Kim?
Yep, you did. I I know what you said.
Pressure.
Is there a second?
Well, so we're not okay with him, the applicant must demonstrate the increase in height is not visible from the river?
No, we're we're not. There's no increased height. It's the historic.
Historic height.
It's the same height as the previous building was torn down. So they're not going.
Oh, yeah, I get it, like in the thing here, though, so, but right, I get what you're saying.
We just added another condition that kind of overrides that one.
Yep.
Still looking for a second.
So will this be coming back before the council or no?
I let's get a second then.
Somebody wanna second this?
Would you like one from the floor?
I'll second it. Do we have a roll call on this or no? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against?
Aye.
So we have.
Three, three areas in one day?
Day.
Acting Mayor and Councilmembers, the resolution that outlines this approval will be brought back at your next meeting under a consent agenda. It will have a a resolution number, but it is what it is. It has been approved based on all those conditions. You gentlemen are aware of the conditions. You can proceed with the project. It's just a formality getting that resolution.
If one of them in there, we need to spend the building.
Yeah, you with the new plans that shows the different height. Yep, you can move forward with that.
Guys, thanks a lot. I mean, just considering taking time away from your families to be here, appreciate it.
Well, we're doing it for the big bucks, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
So, just so we're, everybody's on the same page here, okay? When you say they can go ahead doing it with the resolution that we're gonna approve at our next meeting. Does that mean somebody's approving this, you know, is checking on this besides Dewey?
What I what I mean is they can proceed with the new building permit with the new plans. They're gonna have to revise their plans.
We're not gonna go out there.
And then they're gonna have to go through the the normal process. Things need to be submitted. It's based on all the conditions. The city engineer has to get out there, so as as the conditions were outlined, it's it's pretty clear process. Mr. Baylen has been working very closely with the consulting planner. He's been a pleasure to work with. We will, he will, she'll be in touch.
Jennifer's been awesome.
And and, yeah, and the resolution coming back is just a just the paperwork. It's already been approved based on the conditions, so.
Thank you for your thoughts, John.
Well, I tried to be gentle. Well, then I guess we need to close that part of the meeting. The. Where were we, Kim? Last.
We are moving on to item five, which is just council and staff reports.
So we have.
You're free to go, but you could certainly stay.
Time and.
You guys ready with handshakes?
No, not in not in COVID times.
Oh, my.
Hey, I'm going up to Cortico next week. I'm not even coming close.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you input a lot. Tom, thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Tim?
Thank you.
The roofing guy came by with your recommendation.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just gonna let you know, you better do a good job.
He is a good guy. I've used him for fifteen years.
All right, so, thanks a lot. Thank you, guys.
I'm just gonna walk him out real quick.
Okay, staff updates. My report, like I said, I did run into John Freud. He was reviewing the streets.
And, you know, to, I I talked to him yesterday and he's gonna. Basically, he says, you know, John, he says, he's right, he says, I'm pretty frugal with taxpayers' money.
Yeah, that's what he said, and I think we all are.
Right, and, you know, he says, if there were structural problems out there with the roads, I'd, you know, say that you needed to do something. Because I was all set for this at this meeting to. You know, maybe have him start doing borings and that type of stuff with the idea that we would be prepared to do Quinlan and, let's say. Lakeland Shores Road, you know, sometime in the next couple of years, that type of thing. And he said, you know, well, when I looked at the roads, he says, there's some, especially on the new roads. Part that we've done on Fourth Street and over there in Quinlan towards us, there's some cracks that need to be filled, okay? I guess they. Use a router to take this stuff out and fill it, okay? And he said he would get a bid on that and he would get a bid on the on the. Spray emotion, which is what I noticed they're doing in Lakeland right now. Okay, I ran across the truck. Long and the short of it is, you know, he said, and that's why I started talking about July's meeting, he said, you know. You if we get bids and you wanna go ahead with them, you know, you probably have to have approval, okay? And I, you know, these bids can't be more than a couple thousand bucks apiece, okay? Well, I I mean, we did most of the spray emotion last year, so I, you know, that's why I didn't. Even though Quinlan needs some and my street certainly needs some, it's not like it's, there's so much, there's not five thousand dollars worth. If there is, then, you know.
Well, there's fuel costs. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be, I think there'll be a little bounce. I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm sorry, because I left. Is that just your update?
Yeah.
Actually, I actually took all of that.
My report, yeah, sorry.
And because we've both both have been talking to Perotti in the last two.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, long and the short of it is that, you know. He said he'd get back to me with those bids and or to Kim. And I guess you can make a decision, Kim, or I don't know what the rules are on whether I can approve it as the. As I explained to people that I'm the road commissioner. Say that facetiously.
Not the road guy?
No, in New Hampshire, they call it the road agent. So.
They'll give you that title, too.
So, you know, explain to me, Kim, do we have to have this approved by the city council if it's under five thousand dollars?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. And I spoke with.
Quick meeting if you had to.
I spoke with John as well because he sent out the schedule, which was great. Yeah, even before knowing about the 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 bids, because I didn't know. I was going to suggest that we change the July meeting to the Thursday prior to, which is July thirtieth.
June thirty.
June thirty.
June thirtieth, I'm sorry, yes, June thirtieth. So many people are gone for the week of the Fourth of July. It's very typical practice. And we don't need a motion to do that, just an announcement if you guys are okay with that.
That's fine.
And it works in the schedule with the seal coat. The bids will be back. You can approve them at that that time and it won't delay the project.
If we wanna do it, you know.
Yeah.
I I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay. I will get that posted on the website.
The other thing I was gonna say is, you know, I don't know how many people watch this. You know, be cautious of who you hire for to help do your roof or whatever. Make sure they're a good rental contractor, you know.
I mean, they descended on us like fleas. I mean, as I told the guys, that, you know, I was up there blowing out my gutters yesterday. I didn't notice any damage and on top of the roof's only a year old.
I know, that sucks.
And on top of it, if I was gonna have somebody inspected, I'd get the guy that did the roof.
Yeah. But no.
Yeah, they're all over there. You can tell by their signs.
Yeah. But I haven't, I got one of my yard bits out. I haven't had anybody bug me because the signs are.
Yeah, we put the sign and it's like a roofing contractor rebuilding.
Other than that, that's I have. I missed the last fireboard meeting, but I'm sure Tim will update us on that, so. That's all I got. Tom, you got anything?
No, other than the cleanup day, which we kind of discussed beforehand, and the four of us were there. I've come to the conclusion that the Lower St. Croix Valley has too much junk, but that's just my personal opinion.
And I think Kate, if that's her name.
Yeah, Kate.
You know, came to the conclusion that, you know, I mean, people are bringing, they might as well be demolishing a house and having a, you know. A container behind them, you know, you gotta, you know, this idea that you're gonna charge fifty bucks for a trailer, you know. It's ridiculous, okay, considering what they're bringing in these days, so I think.
I did talk to one, that one woman, and she, it's stuff her renters leave behind, you know, that kind of thing.
And it's not like, you know, I take my stuff down to Play-Doh there and that type of thing, and, you know, they charge you thirty, forty bucks, okay? For a pickup eight foot bed that's filled with junk, you know, but. So it's not that far off, but some of them were just outrageous.
Oh, yeah.
So there's, so I think there'll be some changes.
Some of them look like the clambits were.
And I don't know if that was reflected in how much we paid, that six hundred and thirty dollars, because that's what.
Is that comparable to what we paid before? Okay, that's what I thought.
Because there was some question about, you know, obviously, the more junk they take in, the more trucks they've had there, et cetera, so their costs go up, so.
Kudos to the kings for Christ.
Right, yeah, really.
Those guys are amazing.
Well, John and Tim, they were helping too.
Yeah, I know, but they aren't kings. I can tell.
Tim, you done?
Yeah, well, yeah, cleanup day was a blast. At that one, the city meetings, I was talking.
Five, five city meetings?
Yeah, the five city meetings. They they wanna talk about getting the cable channels back, the local ones. Which would be an increase in the cable and or we would pay with it from our cable distribution money. But they kind of, they're wondering about that, so we give them a little more information.
So we, you've had, what, two or three meetings now?
Yeah, so I think that we're gonna bring it up that we're having a cable meeting, then to discuss it and then to see, take it before the cities.
I mean, is, are we talking here about like the thirty thousand dollars we've gotten, fifteen? I think we're supposed to get another fifteen. Is that the kind of money that we're supposed to be talking about?
No, the cable commission or what, how much money we get from that a year?
Well, I mean, this, but I'm talking about something totally different. We get some federal money. You let me get fifteen thousand?
But that was their COVID relief money. That was a different.
Yeah, but what what can that be used for? And 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 whether that's a, what it can be used for is something that changes as as the deadline nears, you know, that type of stuff.
And I don't, I don't think that would apply for getting those cable channels back. And I think that is a cable commission decision, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, I'm just giving a heads up that they're talking about.
Oh.
So some of the people would like to have the four channels back for the local stores. So then our web hits would go down, you know, and everybody would be able to watch our meetings.
From six to four.
So our meetings will be live, you know.
Right.
In a loop on the cable network channel.
Well, I think the other thing, too, and and this is just my own personal experience, is that I don't have cable.
Yeah.
I have DirecTV. I don't have cable. Like, you know, I mean, I just.
I.
And and you do, as I recall, right?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, and 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 so there, I think that. One of my sons has dropped his cable because he does everything streaming now. And so you're you're finding their revenue is shrinking.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't.
I I I just thought all of a sudden that because the five cities were getting together and having meetings, that there was some. Somebody had some bright idea that maybe as the five cities could actually. Do something with this pot of money that we've all received, okay, each town, you know, based on population. Our population, by the way, that email went up to three hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and eleven, so. So I I thought that was maybe the purpose of the meetings, Tim, you know.
Oh, no, I I don't even think they've ever even talked about money.
About money, okay.
Yeah. They just kind of bring some some of the things they've talked about is getting a camera, a system for the the cities here that would help. Lower crime or whatnot.
Yeah.
So, just, yeah, I think that those have been the main things in a couple. But the the latest being, the last meeting was almost specifically, they had the cable company come in, and it would be for Comcast customers, I assume, then only. Because it would be added to their bill up to a dollar fifty-one a month. But we could say, well, why don't we take half of the cabled money and pay. To reduce that dollar fifty-one a month as an option is is what they talked about. But basically, it's a dollar fifty-one per each subscriber.
Good, and do they indicate there'd be more meetings in the near future?
Oh, yeah, I think we have them.
It's every other month, isn't it?
Quarterly, yeah, every two months.
Other than the roads that I've already discussed, having talked to Perotti, you know. It looks like that place that we red tagged on Second Street North, Clyde or.
I'm sorry, I can talk about that. I happened to stop, I don't know if you. Memorial Day, I happened to stop. He was out, so I talked to him for quite a bit, and I. I mean, I talked with him years ago. Our sons were the same age. And so it'd been a while, and then I had, you know, I said, Dad, probably should have stopped by and talked to you about it, but he's in the progress of tearing it down. He's got a dumpster. He's throwing material away. He's scrapping stuff, and his plan is to have it done by the fall. And I talked to him about that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's definitely there. It's one of the store demolition products I've seen, but, you know, as long. As long as he can.
It's happening.
Yes, I understand that that's a that's a positive, okay? And so I just worry about, you know, whether at the pace they're going, whether it actually will be done by fall.
It's a little faster than Glacier, put it that way.
So, and then there was the the thing over there at Bob Lynn's place, which I understand. Perotti is still on about creating the the rain, whatever you call it.
The rain garden thing, yeah.
Where he's apparently parking his truck, so it's not a done deal yet, but, I mean, he understands he has to do it, but he hasn't done it yet.
That's on the, that'd be the northwest corner in the parking lot there, yeah.
Is it the northwest or northeast? Well, he's supposed to have two of them. He's supposed to have one in the northwest and one in the corner.
You can say something.
I'll I'll send you an email on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry that the medians look as rough as they do. I I talked to Simon, who does all the work on, and, you know, basically, between you and me, saves town of. Lakeland Shores, you know, whatever we were being charged by the previous administration over there, which was, I know, one year was seventeen hundred dollars or or a third of it. And I said, how come, I I thought you were gonna spray and, because obviously the dandelions have gotten rather large. And apparently he was out there, according to my wife, he sprayed this last week, and you can see that they're dying, okay? I'm reluctant to go out there and start picking them up, even with gloves on, with preen or whatever he's using, Roundup or that type of thing, but. But, you know, when I get the impression that the things have died out, you know, we'll try to clean it up a little bit, okay? But I was surprised he waited as long as he did wait, okay?
Of course, that's one of those two, I mean, my wife and I were just talking about it. I mean, it was, you know, it was still forty degrees in the morning two weeks ago, I mean.
Yeah, no, I'm not criticizing him in any way. I mean, I have a good, I think, working relationship with Simon, so it works out. And other than that. I, you know, sometimes, and it's probably in our packet here, Kim, but. Sometimes I see dumpsters at different peaceful houses and I'm not the kind to go up and knock on their door and say, geez, you know, it looks like you're. You know, doing something fairly significant here, you know? But if I had a better idea as to what permits were out there, and I probably should.
It's called Dewey.
It's called Dewey, okay. Because there's there's several dumpsters around right at the moment that, including the one over there for. Burton, who's, we went and looked at his landscaping out in front of the house on the river there last fall, and I don't know what's going on.
You're gonna see a lot of dumpsters with roofs being done, so.
Yeah, okay. And I, you know, I'm not going around looking for work. I'm just, you know, I'm always kind of curious as to. Especially when somebody has tried to do something like what he was attempting to do. And I know he's still gotta do the retaining wall, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Right. That's it? For me?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion when you adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.